2018 at 5:30. We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. Is there any clergy people out there that would like to say an invocation? If not, please join me in a moment Please join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Clark, would you read the procedures for public speaking? For the public to speak.
This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak.
Okay, we have special, there were all special presentations this evening of recognitions. Mr. City Council, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to present the first one?
Yes, sir, I'll do that for you. Presentation of a plaque by Senator Hucul's office celebrating the city of Titusville's 150th anniversary. We have Lindsey Swindell here to present. Mayor, if you could join, I think more than welcome to say a few words as well, ma'am.
Good evening, council. This is, my name's Lindsey Swindell, and also have here Angelique Grinaldi. Back during the 2017 legislative session, Senator Hucul had filed a resolution to honor the city's 150th anniversary. We had a wonderful time. She did a lot of research on the history of Titusville, and she wanted to take this opportunity. She got it personally framed to present, and just as things went, you know, she was unable to come down here and present, and we just wanted to, on her behalf, to say thank you. It's been an honor and pleasure to work with you all, and just on her behalf to present this resolution.
Come on, Angelique.
If I may, for one moment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming and giving us that. We all, of course, mourn Senator Hucul's passing. She was a wonderful lady. I had the privilege of meeting her a lot, many times, actually, and she will be missed, needless to say. And thank you so much for this. We appreciate it, the recognition.
Come get a quick picture. Come on up, Angelique.
Sure, sure.
Come on right now.
One more, one more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Bavard County collects non-ad valorem revenue through a municipal service taxing unit, MSTU Tax, to support the operation and maintenance of park and recreation programs in North Bavard. Bavard County Park and Recreation senior staff will present the annual report to council on the previous year's accomplishments and the future FY 2019 spend plans for the city of Titusville Park and Recreation's program. And I think we have Mary Ellen is here, Mary Ellen Donner, who is the director of the Bavard County Park and Recs. Welcome.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager. I have with me this evening, I'm Mary Ellen Donner, Bavard County Parks and Recreation Department Director. I have Larry Wojciechowski, and I know I never say that right. He's the Support Services Manager, and he's going to be reviewing the budget. And I have also Jeff Davis, who's going to go over some of the programs that are in the north area, Titusville area. So what I was going to do was give you a little brief overview of where we are with the hurricane repairs. I think everybody is very interested as to where are we, what are we doing, and how soon will we get the amenities back that were actually damaged during Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Irma. So the first one I think I want to talk about is the Veterans Memorial Pier. The, the actual area that was damaged was, as you come into the park, underneath the bridge, sidewalk, all the way up to the sidewalk to the catwalk. And so, we got some very good news about that, is that the Florida Department of Transportation has agreed to repair that on the Florida Department Transportation's dime. So luckily, that's not going to cost the county any money. That was the one good news type of thing, and they actually mobilized today. And so they're expecting 120 days for repair, and then we would be back in business. The rest of it, the Board of County Commissioners actually, on their April 24th meeting, agreed for the Parks and Recreation Department to take a loan from the Risk Management Fund. And so they, they agreed and approved $12 million, not Dixie $12 million, for approximately 18 projects throughout the county. And a number of them, obviously, are here in the city of Titusville. And so Sandpoint Park, which is a very popular park, there's actually, there was shoreline damage to, to that park. And so we contracted with our Road and Bridge Department, and they are going to re, restore the original shoreline to pre-storm condition. And they are actually expected to start November 5th, so just in a few days. And almost tandem to that, they will be working in, in Marina Park. And that, that, so we've got Marina Park and Sandpoint Park. Marina's going to go, actually, the other way. Marina's going to go November 5th, and then Sandpoint's going to be the middle of November. So those two, because they're so close in proximity, will go at the same time. Next, of course, we had Spaceview Park. I think that Spaceview Park actually had the most damage of any parks that were damaged by the storm. And so that particular park, as long with any of the other parks, we've actually contracted to have design and permitting done. And all of the parks in the Titusville area, if I could say that, Titusville area, are in some form or fashion in design and permitting. Some are a little ahead of others, some are a little behind others. We had some challenges in that we might have had a maintenance dredging permit in some instances, and in others instances, we did not. In some instances, we had design, like actual designs, engineering drawings, and in some other instances, we didn't. So depending on if we had some of those items, really was how fast it kicked off and, and at what progress we're going to make. So we expect that design and permitting is between two to four months, and the design is two to four months, permitting could be up to six months, and then we expect construction to take three to six months. But the good news is, all of them are in design at this point, and in some point of permitting. So if you have any specific questions about any of the parks, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? I see none.
Okay. I will next bring up Larry. He's the money guy from our department.
Good, good man to know.
I have the boring part, unfortunately. What I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about the 18-19 budgets. I have, because I have no numbers yet for 18, we're still developing last year's numbers. As far as what is collected up in the north area, the District 1 MSTU, for the entire north area, we collect roughly $2.9 million. Of that, $1.1 million is associated to what is collected in the city of Titusville. So that money stays in that area. What I like to do is talk to you a little bit about how we're going to spend some of that money. Of course, we're going to take care of all of your parks, the way they have currently. We have to set aside, unfortunately, some money for the hurricane repairs. Rationale behind that is Bavard County is responsible for 12.5% of all the repairs that are done, because FEMA will pay 75%, and the state will only pay 12.5. So we have to set aside some money to pay for the other 12.5. In addition to that, what we plan on doing is doing about $350,000 worth of capital purchases, spread out through the District 1 area, but of course, some of the cash that's collected in the city of Titusville is going to pay for those items, i.e. vehicles, mowers, computers for staff, different items like that. One thing that I can associate directly to one of the parks is at Sandpoint. We're planning on putting in about $46,000 worth of exercise equipment in this year, into the park. Other than that, very, very straightforward. Any questions?
Any questions? Don't see any.
I like it that way.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Hello.
Hello, all right. Okay, my name's Jeff Davis. I'm the operations manager of Parks and Recreation. I provided to you with the, an actual letter back dated October 1st that identifies all of our programs that we've done here in the north area, as well as throughout the entire county. I'm responsible for 44 parks in the north area. Well, I gave, we gave you everything. We gave you everything that we're doing here in Titusville, Titusville City Limits, as well as the things that we're doing throughout the, my area of responsibility. Not to bore you with the reading, what you already had before you, I'll just go through and highlight a couple of things. Some of the things that I'm really excited about is that we have, I think at my last meeting here, we brought my new team members, Tex Lowholz and Robert Salazar. And those gentlemen are very, very active in making sure that we meet the needs of the citizens here in Titusville. Special events that are being, that are specific to the city of Titusville was the adult Easter egg hunt that was held at Sandpoint Park. We had about 150 attendance to that particular event. For Easter egg hunt, and for adults, that was kind of a big number, and we were very, very proud of that. We had a Tuxedra event that was held in Sandpoint Park, May 19th, that drew approximately 1,000 people. First time out, and we hit a home run of that. We had a lot of, lot of kids very, very pleased at what we provided there. There were about 20 vehicles that were provided throughout the community. Very, very excited about how this event will grow in the years to come. We can talk about our summer camp numbers. Summer camps typically go from May 25th, our last year went from May 25th through August 9th. Age of children are ages five through 12. We'll talk about numbers, if you need numbers, specific to Isaac Campbell and Sandriff. Isaac Campbell is always a challenge, and numbers actually fluctuate because of the challenges that we have. Some other folks are actually doing camps in the areas. So the numbers are around, around between 35 and 40 at that, that camp. Sandriff, although we had an increase in our numbers that year, we actually had, I think because the YMCA did not do a summer camp that year, we had an increase in our numbers, where I think we were around 65 to 70 kids for, per week at our, our camps. The camps trips involving trips to Daytona Lagoon, Crayola Experience, Andretti Thrill, Thrill Park, Wonder Works, and Fun Spot. We provide this service every summer. What we get excited about is our fourth quarter, so to speak, for what we do as far as providing service to the citizens here in Titusville. Our teen camp was a new event this year. We actually had about 14 participants this, this summer, May 29th through the, through August 3rd. The ages are between 12 and 15. We had about 14 participants per week. That event went very, very well. We're hoping to increase and see higher numbers in our summer camp as we go. Our movies in the series, I think, city council person, Mrs. Nelson, asked that we do the monthly, do those on a monthly basis. We met that request, and we did those movies starting April 28th. You have the dates of all the movies that were shown up until this point, but I want to make sure that you are all invited to the, the event that we have scheduled at Fox Lake, because we're accommodating two events. I brought flyers that I'll hand out before I leave this podium. The movie that's being shown is Hocus Pocus, in theme of Halloween. But we're also doing our Fall Festival, and at that Fall Festival, we have multiple vendors coming out. We do a trunk or treat, costume contests, a really, really big event. We're gearing ourselves up. We're hoping that we'll service about 4,000 people at this particular event. So I'm going to make sure that I give each one of you a flyer concerning that event as we come. The movie in the park, we actually purchased new equipment for the, for meeting the expectations of the citizens in Titusville. We purchased a 30-foot tall, 17-foot wide screen. And so if you've not seen that, I encourage you to come out, any citizens in the community that are interested of not seeing that. I encourage you to come to Fox Lake this weekend. You'll get a chance. It's a brilliant, bright, big, bold picture, great sound, be a great event for everybody to be a part of. Okay. Over at Isaac Campbell Park, I think the, the interest, I think, of Mr. City Councilman Diesel, as well as Mrs. City Councilwoman Nelson, was involving the programs involving teens. Now, over at Isaac Campbell Community Center, we have the, I'm just going to go over the list of the camps, the, the programs that we do have there. We have a senior citizen program, which is very, very good. We have about, about 12, 15 senior citizens that meet there on a regular basis. We have the adult computer lab that opens from 10 to 4. We have a homework table that's available for 3 to 6 during the weekdays. We have Boy Scouts that meet on Monday, 5:30 to 6:30. Become a Butterfly is a girl mentoring program that meets on Mondays between 5 and 7. Open Recreation is always done there, but Fridays and 6, we, Fridays from 2 to 6 is Open Recreation, and Saturdays 10 to 2. We have teen basketball on Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30. We have teen movie night every Friday night of each, of the month. Summer camp average, like you said, it says 29, but closer to 30, to 35 kids that participated in our summer camp. Now, Sandriff, over at Sandriff Community Center, we have a program that's actually in place now called Community Cares. It's an after-school program, and where we actually pick up kids from the Apollo Elementary. We have about six vacancies right now. We can pick up about 13 kids. We have about seven kids that come on a regular basis, and that's a mentoring program that's offered at that, at that school, and those kids love it. We're hoping that, that those numbers will pick up, and we might be able to possibly transport probably two land loads of kids into that particular program. We have a seniors billiards program that meets every day, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., and Saturday 10 to 2. We have ping pong, beginner line dancing, zumba, and I'm also a summer camp, and our summer camp numbers are there, are always growing. I can go over a list of the athletic programs that are being offered, but I can tell the way Mr. Diesel's rearing up, he's got a ton of questions that he's sitting on. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip through, through that.
You see it in his eyes.
You know him well.
Yeah. And what I want to touch base on is actually there are some things that are going on involving Williott Fighting Edge over at the, over at the Gibson Center. Williott Fighting Edge has done a great job. He provides the amateur boxing, and creates a doorway, a diverse culture between the community through health and fitness, tutoring programs, application of life skills, integrating our moral character and leadership skills. That program is going very, very well for us, and any support that, that we've asked of Mr. Taylor to give to us, he gives to us. So reciprocate that by giving him anything that he needs to make his program successful. Any questions?
Just one comment. I'm familiar with that program that Mr. Taylor does, and it's fabulous what he has accomplished with those young people, and bringing them forward to be upright citizens, and it's just amazing what he's done through athletics, basically. And basically with him, his wife, and a few other volunteers. So we, we do appreciate all the help you have given him as well.
Yes, I commend him. He's a, he's a, he's a great attribute to this, to this community.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Diesel, you're, Member Diesel, you are on.
I don't necessarily have a question.
Uh-oh.
I have a, just a couple of comments. As the Titusville, city of Titusville liaison to the Parks and Rec Board, I, I want to say that Jeff, or Mr. Davis and I have met several times with some of the concerns we had when I first got on the council with activities. You know, that was a word that we were kind of stressing, activities. And the more I sit on the board, and the more I get to hear, and the more I get to meet with you, the more I realize that you guys are working really hard to, to up the activities. You have, in the last two years, in my mind, I don't have the stats and facts, maybe, you know, there, there's specific numbers, and I know there are. But I know that there are more activities now than there were, and I know that your efforts are very clear. And sitting in the meetings, getting to hear the different people that come up to the front, and everybody doesn't get to know that. But the number of times you guys have come together to try to make sure there's a facility for somebody who needs a facility. Willie Taylor, who was a former player of mine way back in the 90s, and now his son is playing for me, is just a great example of that. If you guys didn't come through with a facility for him, there probably is no program. We just had, and I, I don't know enough about all the program, but we just had a young lady speak to us, and you guys have set her up with a place that's helping people with employment and to start businesses and things like that. So it's not just recreation you guys are dealing with. You're, you're dealing with programs that simply improve living in our community. So I appreciate that greatly. But I would also say that, again, going to the meetings and being a part of the meetings, I'm a little more aware than maybe most of how much the hurricanes have knocked you guys off your feet. And financially, personnel-wise, time-wise, there's a great, we have a report every month on where we're at with hurricane repairs. So what I'm trying to get at is, they're moving forward, they're picking up their game, things have gone, a lot of new personnel in the last couple of years, and there's a real fire and a passion to get the job done that I, I can testify to. But at the same time, you've always got your finger on trying to get the parks back up to snuff, because they really took a hit in the last few years, and knock on wood, they were doing okay this year. So basically, my hat's off to you guys, and I'm pleased that I get to sit in on these meetings and be a part of the meetings, and see what you're trying to do for the, the different groups. And again, people don't realize that you're shifting things around, just trying to make facilities available for people. Gibson's a tremendously used facility now that wasn't used to its fullest, and, and you guys are still trying to find some more spots in there. So I appreciate all of you, and where you're at with what you're doing. And Jeff, our meetings have, have gone back to where whatever you said we're going to try to do, you've tried to do.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Member Nelson.
I have no questions, but just in case Mary Ellen hasn't heard this lately, don't let this man retire. No retirement. 70, 75's good. And the two guys that are working with him, especially the guys that set up the truck program, I could hear those kids squealing yards away, yards away. And I mean, you just hear this, "Eeeeh!"
And it was, it was great. So, thank you.
I thank you for your support. Continue to, really, please come to that, that event this weekend. It's, it's a paramount event that we're trying to put together for the citizens here in Titusville. I think the city of Titusville is going to be very, very well pleased on, on our efforts in trying to provide a good quality product at, at Fox Lake. Please, and, please try to attend that event.
Friday or Saturday?
It's Friday. I brought a flyer.
Friday, okay.
And last but not least, Members.
I know, I know. I just wanted to echo some of the comments that have already been said. I am thoroughly impressed by the list of events that you guys have kind of stepped it up, and especially now including some of the numbers, so we can see kind of what's popular, what may not be so popular, especially with the hurricane damage. I was just expecting so much focus to be on that, and it seems like you guys are really tackling that in addition to keeping these programs going. My only question would be from us, is there anything that we can do to help kind of get the word out about these amazing programs, whether it's through social media, directing people? Is there anything that we can do to help?
I had one idea, and my, and my thoughts over here is that we don't communicate, our IT people don't communicate, our people who develop our webpages don't communicate. So if we could actually have those folks communicating, sharing information.
On our city of Titusville pages, that would be awesome.
Yes, ma'am, I think it would be very beneficial.
Okay.
And also too, on our Facebook, a lot of times, and Rob Salazar, the gentleman you were talking about, is very tech savvy. He, he's on Facebook streaming, he's online, and that really captures the imagination of the younger generation.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And so, you know, if we, if, you know, we can work with your IT people and tag posts, and it helps tremendously to get, to get the word out about the programs and get attendance to actually come out and take advantage of them. So we can certainly work with the county manager, city manager, and the assistant city manager.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and.
Thank you.
We, we officially accept it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. City Manager.
The Marine Resources Council published the Indian River Lagoon Health Update this past year, 2018, commonly referred to as the Indian River Lagoon Report Card, to evaluate the changes in the lagoon's health in order to make a targeted improvement where they're, where they are most needed. The executive director of the Marine Resources Council, Dr. Lisa Soto, is here to provide the presentation. Ma'am, thank you very much for coming.
Good evening, Dr. Soto. How are you?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm really pleased to be here before the city council, the fine city of Titusville. You guys are doing a great job up here, trying to protect and restore Indian River Lagoon, and we appreciate it. and we appreciate it. I'm gonna talk a little bit about a different amenity that we have for, for not only a natural amenity that we all enjoy, but also a playground that we used to ski in a lot more than we are now. Uh, and, um, and discuss a report that we're putting out. And I want to explain how we did this, so that you understand where we're coming from and the goals that we have for this report, and, and then answer any questions you have about, you know, how we can help. So my name's Lisa Soto. I'm the Executive Director of the Marine Resources Council. And we are a nonprofit that's been trying to protect and restore the Indian River Lagoon since the early nineteen eighties. We were started by the Florida Institute of Technology professor, really to bring citizen science into the policy arena. We've always been, our motto is "Science to Action", and it's always like trying to collect data and share data and inform and provide evidence to inform policy. So that's our mission. We do it through education, restoration, and then science, like I mentioned. This piece kind of brings it all together, the Indian River Lagoon Report. Uh, it's a, it's an education piece, but we used almost two million scientific data collected by our state agencies, put them all in one database, twenty years' worth of data, uh, and put them into a format that's easy to understand. So I'm gonna talk about, you know, kind of how we did it, so you understand, you know, how the grades were made. But before I go on, why did we do this and why is it important? The goals of this report were really to give people the power of knowledge. So the agencies that collect data, the academic institutions that collect data tend to be the hubs of understanding of these types of data. So how do you get scientific data in a, in a format that people can understand? So that was one thing. It's just knowledge is power. Uh, the second goal was, it's gonna, we know it's gonna take a long time to bring the lagoon back. It took it a long time to get this bad. It's gonna take a long time to get it back to health. We wanted to show the public that things are getting a little bit better over time. We had an example from Chesapeake Bay. Chesapeake Bay, as you may have heard, has recovered a lot, uh, due to their efforts over the past thirty years. And they put out a report card. It's a little bit hard to see here, and I don't think my pointer's gonna work. Uh, but the, the line is their projected path. They want, they had a very low score of a twenty-three at one point. And then they are showing an incremental change over thirty years. That number is going up. So people are hopeful. They're seeing the number improving, and as their number's improving, their, their crabs are improving, their water quality's improving, and things are improving. So we know it's gonna take a long time. We need to stay engaged in the long run as a community. We need to see that number change. We want to see, you know, what does this score look like? Where is it getting better? Where is it not getting better? Uh, and kind of challenge ourselves to do a better job. So when we go about trying to assess the health of a system as complicated as the Indian River Lagoon, we kind of have to think about, like, what are the indicators? What are the vital signs of health? And it's not, it's not unlike ourselves. I mean, human beings are a very complex system. And when we go to the doctor, the doctor takes our vital signs. Things like our blood pressure, and our cholesterol, and our temperature, and so on. So when we went to try to think of what are those vital signs of health for the lagoon, you know, what would we be measuring? We went to the experts, and we held a science assembly, and we got sixty-one of the lagoon experts in a room. Uh, we, we let them go home at night, but we did kind of lock them in for two and a half days and do the, ask the tough questions, like what would indicators look like? What does a healthy lagoon look like? What would the measurements be? Of, of the probably thirty different things that came up, with things that ranged from, uh, sandworms to clams and fish and manatees and all kinds of things, we had to limit it to only things that we had data for. So yes, sandworms are very important for the lagoon. They're, they're important to the system. But if we don't have sandworm data in the lagoon, we don't have a measurement, we don't have an understanding of how many sandworms are supposed to be there. So we needed to have the data, and then we needed to have a target. So when you think about my example of the human body and a vital sign of cholesterol, if you go to the doctor and they say, oh, your cholesterol is two eighty, and you're like, good, that's good, right? If you don't know what the healthy target is, if it's supposed to be two hundred, then you're, you're lost in the, in, in the rough. You just don't know where you're supposed to be. So we also had to pick indicators that had an existing healthy target that we knew we needed to get to. So these five things that you're looking at on the screen right now are the only five indicators of health that have adequate data that cover the entire lagoon and have an existing regulatory target. There are only five things that have regulatory targets in the lagoon. Four of them are associated with water quality. Chlorophyll A is about a measurement of algae. Uh, there are two nutrients that we've talked about a lot, nitrogen and phosphorus. Those both have targets. Turbidity is just a measure of how cloudy or clear the water is. And then one habitat indicator is seagrass, and we know how important seagrass is, and it has targets. These targets are, have been established by both the state and federal agencies as ecological health targets for the lagoon, broken into ten different regions. Um, in the report, it's a little easier to see, and on our website, savetheirl.org, you can actually zoom in. There's a GIS story map that you can zoom into these areas and see them closer. It's a little hard to see on the screen. Know there are ten regions. The Mosquito Lagoon is actually divided into three. Where we're located here in Titusville, it's the, the region of the North Indian River Lagoon. The Banana River Lagoon is on the other side of Merritt Island. The Central Indian River Lagoon is divided into north and south. The Central Indian River Lagoon North goes from, uh, the Melbourne Causeway down to the Indian River County Line. The Central Indian River Lagoon South is pretty much the Indian River County Line. Uh, then the South Indian River Lagoon is divided into three areas for regulatory purposes, north, central, and south. They each, uh, they have different targets established for them. I'm gonna give you an example of chlorophyll A targets. So these are the healthy targets that have been established by our regulatory agencies for chlorophyll A, which is a measure of algae. Um, in the North Indian River Lagoon, where we are right now, the targets were established by the state agency, St. John's. And the, the annual median, the central Tennessee, is four point seven micrograms per, I'm sorry, four point six micrograms per liter. You can see that they, they range depending on where you are in the lagoon. The Mosquito Lagoon South is very susceptible to damage. It's very shallow, and it has a long retention time. Water stays there a long time. That's why its target is set so low. Uh, and then, so just know that there are targets like this set for all of those five indicators for all ten regions. I'm not gonna do them all. If you're interested in seeing the targets, they're on our website, savetheirl.org. So to come up with a score, we wanted to make it easy. So these things that look like micrograms per liter and all these different targets, and then seagrass is in, uh, distances of seagrass transect length. So in order to compare things and standardize everything, we created a score from zero to one hundred. Just like we all got grades on our reports, we all got hundreds on our reports in college and high school. But, um, we wanted to make it a score that was easy for people to understand. So to do that, the first thing we did was just figure out what the difference is in the target and the actual value. So just like my example, cholesterol, if you go to the doctor and they say your cholesterol is two forty and it needs to be two hundred, you need to lower your cholesterol by forty. So this is what we did with all the data on the lagoon. Uh, so for example, with chlorophyll A, if the, um, actual condition, if the actual annual average is four, and it needs to be, uh, if, I'm sorry, if the, if the target is four and the actual condition is ten, you need to lower the actual condition by six, right? So it makes sense. Um, okay, well, my example is, if the actual is fourteen and the, the, um, target is four, then you need to lower the amount that's in the water by ten micrograms per liter. So it's called an offset. So the actual value is much, much greater than the target, so that's bad. If the, if the actual concentration is three and the offset is one, then that's good. Then it's, it's less than what it's supposed to be. Did I say that? Was that confusing? Should I say it again?
We have it up here.
Only 'cause I messed it all up. But the, um, so if the target is lower than the actual value, it's bad. And if the target is more than the actual value, it's good. Okay, so then we put all of those into categories. These are all offsets in a histogram. And we just put them in bins. So it'd be like, um, if the, if your chlorophyll, every time you went to the doctor and they took your cholesterol level, and sometimes you were forty over, and sometimes you were fifty over, and sometimes you were a hundred over, they would just count how many times it was over forty, how many times it was over a hundred. This is how many times it was, that this was the difference between the actual and the target. And you notice down there that red bar. So these colors are where the colors come in. The red is the worst. Those are the colors. Red is the, the farthest away from the target, um, concentrations. And those are ten or more, in the case of chlorophyll A, away from the target. So we created categories and made them color-coded to make it easy. The greens are good, and the, the yellow is eh, it's okay. It's like only one difference. It's like one, one away from, from the target. And then the oranges and dark oranges and reds are where you're getting really far away from where it needs to be. These are regulatory targets. So then we took that and we created, uh, we standardized a, an equation to just create a scale from zero to one hundred. So the scores are, if you've got a less than a fifty, it's really bad. And if you got a fifty to a fifty-nine, eh, you're pretty bad, but you're, you're, there's hope that you might pass. Uh, sixty to sixty-nine, you're, you passed, you're good. You can, you know, I, I got a D. Seventy to seventy-nine is a C, and then eighty, eighty, uh, or above eighty is, is meeting target. So we, we decided that meeting target is a B. And then if you're, do better, if you get a ninety, or you've actually exceeded the target, you're doing really well. Okay, so these are chlorophyll A scores, just as an example. Um, for the Mosquito Lagoon, chlorophyll A again is, is the amount of algae in the water. Um, and you can see that, uh, and, and all of these tables that you're gonna be looking at and over the next couple of slides, and they're in the book. The year, so we did twenty years of data. We did this for over twenty years of data. The year is down the side, so each row is a different year. And then when you go from left to right, it's going from north to south in the lagoon, those ten different regions. So I'm gonna go ahead and show all of the tables. So seagrass, um, this is in, this is in the book. So seagrass is one of the really most important vital signs of health in the lagoon. And we know we've lost most of the seagrass. I think the last percentage acreage loss was over eighty percent of the seagrasses are lost lagoon-wide. Um, so what's, uh, what's interesting about this is that, um, there are no seagrass transects in the Mosquito Lagoon North at all. Mosquito Lagoon Central and the Mosquito Lagoon South were kind of thought to be the places where, where the seagrasses were doing really well, but they're not meeting targets. The North Indian River Lagoon, which is where we're located, seagrasses have been close to meeting targets, um, in the past. Like in the two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, time where it's yellow. And then two thousand and ten is when we got our first major super bloom, and that's when we started to really lose seagrasses. That first year, twenty-ten, by twenty thirteen, we lost almost seventy percent of seagrasses lagoon-wide. Um, the other thing that's interesting about seagrass scores is that the South Indian River Lagoon is really suffering with seagrass losses. And it doesn't relate to their water quality at all. So the lowest score in the entire lagoon in terms of seagrass loss is in the South Indian River Lagoon Central, which is where Lake Okeechobee comes in. They have zero seagrasses, um, although their, their, their water quality scores don't look, don't, don't look terrible. I'm gonna, um, focus on, and with maps, so we've mapped all of these years also, so we have a better understanding spatially of where things are doing better and where things aren't doing as good. Uh, but I'm just gonna show twenty sixteen, which unfortunately is the most recent year of data that we have. We still don't have twenty seventeen data out of the agencies, which is a challenge for managing an estuary. If you don't get the data to manage to, until two years after they've been collected, it makes it hard, you know, to manage an estuary. But the agencies do a terrific job of quality assuring their data. It just takes them a couple of years to get it done. Um, so we're waiting on our twenty seventeen data. Twenty sixteen, you'll recall, was a particularly bad year. So this is when we map it. This is what it looks like. And I'm just gonna, like I said, you can, our website, savetheirl.org, you can go into these maps. You can zoom in on the dots. You can, you can select a dot, and it'll show you the, you know, much more data associated with the point. The dots, each dot is a sampling location. So you can look at this and count the number of dots in the North Indian River Lagoon and know how many locations are being sampled by St. John's in the North Indian River Lagoon. The, uh, and then the regions are color-coded by averaging all the dots. And then the dots are, uh, are their own, their own color. So when you look at the North Indian River Lagoon, it's kind of interesting that even though the region is red for seagrass, that up, that up at the northern end of the North Indian River Lagoon, north of here, um, it's actually not so bad. You actually have some good seagrass, uh, here in Titusville and north of Titusville, which, from the perspective of retention time, doesn't, you know, doesn't really make sense. It's, it's very interesting that you're, that you've got seagrass up here. It's, it's promising. It's, it's somewhere seagrass is still living in the lagoon that we hope we can get some seed, you know, just flowing into other areas and recruit some new seagrass into the other areas of the lagoon. So covet your seagrass. You know, be really careful about educating boaters about cutting through seagrass beds and, you know, being protective of the seagrass that's left here. It's one of the few areas left, uh, maybe in the entire system. Okay, nitrogen scores, again, we're looking at twenty years of data. Um, just, you can see without even really looking at the numbers that things were a lot hotter. Uh, twenty years ago, we had a lot more orange and red. And then things started to look really good in the early aughts, I guess we call them, the early two thousands or the mid-two thousands. You know, the nitrogen was coming down in concentration in the lagoon, and then twenty sixteen happened. So the twenty sixteen oranges are probably rotting fish. So you know when things rot, it gives off ammonium. And we had that huge fish kill and a lot of, of rotting fish in twenty sixteen. So things like that are gonna, are gonna contribute to nitrogen concentrations. Uh, my office is in Palm Bay, about a mile south of the Melbourne Causeway, and I'm in the Central Indian River Lagoon North, and I just stare, if you look at that column, I just stare at my column and go, why? Why are you always so bad? My, the, my little section of the lagoon, my region, uh, down there is particularly troublesome. North lagoon, again, is plotted. You can see the, um, the, the regional against the, each of those points averages for nitrogen in the Northern Lagoon and the Southern Lagoon nitrogen scores. And I'm gonna kind of go quickly, 'cause I know we don't have time, but I can go back if you have questions, okay? Phosphorus scores, you see the opposite relationship. And we actually did trend analyses on nitrogen and phosphorus and showed, to prove scientifically that there's a significant reduction in nitrogen in the lagoon, lagoon-wide, and there's a significant increase in phosphorus lagoon-wide. So with phosphorus, you see the greens were years ago, and now we've got oranges and reds more recently. So now, and especially right there at that year, twenty-ten, all of a sudden, things start to get real orange with phosphorus. And if, and it's starting to illuminate the possibility that what we're dealing with, with algae blooms, is really a phosphorus problem. And where's all the phosphorus coming from? We can go looking for phosphorus now. These are the map scores again, um, the regions against the, the sampling locations. Chlorophyll A, this is algae. So this is where twenty-ten, twenty, two thousand nine, we started to see the first blue-green algae bloom initiated twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, twenty. You know, we've pretty much had a different color bloom every year since twenty-ten. You know, again, and you know, it's hard just to, uh, prove causation in science, but it's an interesting relationship that phosphorus, you know, started to increase concentrations in the lagoon about the same year we started having these pervasive algae blooms. There's a lot to, to be said about, about chlorophyll A. Oh, one of the points I'd like to make also, uh, in the far-right column, no data. You see at the bottom, starting in twenty-twelve in the South Indian River, Indian River Lagoon South, that is where, um, the state is no longer collecting any water quality data. And what we saw going through twenty years of data, of this data set, were the sampling sites going on and off. They would start, they would monitor for a couple of years, and then they would stop. They would start, they'd go for ten years, and then they'd stop. We have fewer monitoring stations in the lagoon now than we did twenty years ago. So that, it's almost, you know, nonsensical to think that when you start to get sick, the doctor's gonna say, oh, we're gonna stop measuring your cholesterol now. You're doing, you're doing really badly. You know, it's, it's the time that we need to ramp up monitoring. It's the time we need to get more data, uh, in the lagoon, more frequent sampling, uh, and more stations, not be cutting, cutting our, our monitoring budgets. So this is our state agencies getting their, their budgets cut and trying frantically to maintain some type of a monitoring scenario, um, with, uh, limited budgets. So one of the things I keep saying when I get in front of our state representatives is give our water management districts their money back so they can monitor our water quality again. Chlorophyll A, I like this map. I mean, I don't like it 'cause it's all red on the left, but you can see that that's almost exactly where the fish kill happened in twenty sixteen. The chlorophyll A concentrations reflect the extent of that fish kill. So it's not a good thing, but it does, uh, tell the story. Turbidity is, uh, is just the, um, amount of how turbid or how dark the water is, its color. Uh, actually, it's the amount of sediment in it, so it would include chlorophyll A. And it would also include dirt and sediment coming in from roads. And this is what turbidity looks like in the maps. And then to just compare water quality and habitat, we created a water quality score of all four of the water quality indicators. It tends to average everything out, so then extremes show more. Um, so you can see extreme events in the North Indian River Lagoon. In twenty, twenty-eleven, or I think, yeah, twenty-eleven, you had an extreme water quality, you know, event where things got really bad as far as your water quality, most certainly due to the algae bloom. And then this is what water quality scores look like, uh, in the entire lagoon. then this is what water quality scores look like in the entire lagoon. So what does it tell us? I mean, I am a very hopeful person. So I think that what we see in 20 years of data is a lagoon that is very resilient, you know, that, you know, early on nitrogen started to decrease in the lagoon. And I suspect it might be because we passed a Indian River Lagoon Act and required the direct disconnect of really billions of gallons of wastewater that was being discharged into the lagoon untreated. That had to go into effect by, I think, 1996. And then the lagoon responded. The nitrogen value started to decrease. So to me, that means that it, it's going to pay off, that our actions that we're doing now, that it's going to respond, and it's going to start to, we're going to start to see improvements happening. So that's the message of hope. Unfortunately, you know, late, you know, in the past, really from 2009 to 2016, the lagoon did the opposite thing. It went from, you know, yes, it flips one direction. Look, it's looking much better. Our seagrasses were coming back. We'd reached record levels of seagrasses by 2009. And then the algae bloom started, and now we've seen it like gone to the other extreme. It's like we've got a system that's very resilient, but it's also very touchy, right? So it's reaching a point where now it's the other extreme. But we need, we can get it back to the other, the other extreme, the good extreme, with all of our good work. The other things we, we know for sure is that we're not measuring enough things to really understand the complexity of the system. These four water quality indicators and one habitat quality are not enough. We need to be looking at more things, especially some of the things that are harmful to us, like harmful algae that are in the water, bacteria that are in the water. You notice that those aren't up there. They stopped being collected in 2010. That there are things like salinity that are impacting seagrasses dramatically that aren't being measured. So there are a lot of things missing. We actually wrote a 100-page document of what's missing in terms of monitoring that we've given the National Estuary Program. So we, we need not only more monitoring of what we have, we need to understand really the health, you know, as far as human health. I mean, there are things going into the lagoon that are, that are harmful to marine mammals. And if they're harmful to marine mammals, they're, they're probably harmful to us. So what are our next steps? We want to keep this going. This needs to be an annual report. It needs to be independently funded. You know, I'm proud that this one was funded almost entirely by the community. The National Estuary Program paid for the science, so we can make sure the science was rigorous. We've got a paper into a peer-reviewed journal to demonstrate that. But pretty much the rest of it was funded just by the community. It needs to be independently funded so that there isn't any political boundaries, so to speak, put on the outcomes. And we were successful at doing that the first time. We have a lot less time now to get the second one out. We want to not only reproduce this, we want to add things like the tributaries. The tributaries, like the creeks and the rivers coming in, are going to tell the story of where this polluted water is coming from. And we can start as a community to go upstream and figure out where these sources are and start working on them. And then the other thing I'd really, really like to add, because I don't know about you, but I can't hear the words, you guys, nobody is doing anything about the lagoon, you know, too many times. I mean, I've, I've heard that way too many times, and I'm sure you have too. People are frustrated. They're seeing, you know, bad things are happening, and they just kind of like throw up their hands and say, why should I do something when nobody else is doing anything? And we know everybody's doing things. So we need to put those projects on the map, not only to show our public what we're doing, but also to kind of maybe challenge each other as a community and say, hey, look at what they've done. What an innovative idea. We could do something like that over here down the street in our city as well. So, you know, putting the projects on the map and letting people know what's going on with all of our hard work. Need to acknowledge a bunch of players. I can't go into all of them right now, but we did have a peer-reviewed subcommittee from the National Estuary Program come together to review all of our science. The water management districts were phenomenal and spending a lot of time explaining their water management, their data to us. Their data are available on their websites. You can go and get all the same data that we got from water management district websites. We got a lot of help from the Smithsonian. And we tried to get birds at one point. Somebody wanted to put pelicans in the reports. So we worked with the Audubon Society, who do the Christmas bird counts, to try to get some bird data in. And then we really, really want the fisheries data. Rich Paperno at FWC has 30 years of fisheries data and the shell fisheries data we would like to add as well. So that's where we're headed, hopefully. And that's all I got. So I appreciate everybody's time and I'm glad to answer any questions that you have.
You shouldn't say that's all you got. That's quite a lot that you have.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
Remember, Elsie, you're first.
Okay, Lisa. If you had to pick one big project, what would you suggest?
One big project for?
For the lagoon.
Certain area.
So one big project.
Okay, our area. I mean, it's not that the other areas don't count.
There are so many things. So we are working with Brevard County to try to understand how wastewater can be improved. So wastewater treatment plant upgrades, you know, trying to reduce what the concentration of nitrogen is that's in the irrigation water that might be going out through reclaimed lines. Septic tank, right? So the county just tried to pass the, or they did successfully pass an ordinance that requires upgraded septic systems in certain areas of the lagoon. Street sweeping. So that's something that, you know, people don't, I don't think realize the importance of. You know, investing in the capital of a street sweeper makes a huge difference in the amount of sediment that's going down the storm drains. Sediment carries the nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus. So street sweeping is, is a very important part of it. You know, public education, you've already passed your fertilizer ordinance here, but I don't know that, that people know about it. You know, getting the word out to the people that there is an ordinance and what it entails, and, you know, how on earth do you figure out if the fertilizer is 50% slow release? You know, you can't just say, you know, buy the 50% slow release fertilizer. The bags don't say that. They have to figure it out. They have to do the calculation. So just, you know, understanding what the needs are in terms of public behavior change and awareness is super important. There's, there's a lot of things. I know you asked me before the meeting, and I'm like, I always have a thousand things. And then people are like, too many. Stop, stop.
Well, I'm sort of hearing education. And I was sort of hoping that at some point that we, we'd get some materials from our, our state agency that we could pass out to the kids and educate them, because we do have a rolling reader program in the schools. So you might as well read them, stuff that they need to know.
Yeah, yeah, good.
So I was hoping that we, at some point, we would do that. But I never thought about street sweeping. I never did. It was just.
We've got to.
We've got to.
We have.
Excellent.
It just never dawned on.
Yes, there are a lot of things. And then in your parks, if you have the little doggy dooley receptacles, you know, with the bags.
We've got that. Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of things.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Amber Diesel?
Even with all the ideas you just tossed out, and they're all great ideas, something I've always kind of felt about the, the lagoon is, you can't just clean part of an aquarium. You've got to clean the whole thing. So is there a coordinated effort from the northern part, the northern, most northern area of the lagoon? Because I can tell you, Brevard County is walking the walk. We're not just talking the talk. Our citizens voted to, you know, do the half-cent sales tax. And, and they're doing their part. And they're, that's why they keep saying, what are we doing? What are we doing? Because they know they're paying their half-cent sales tax. They're just not sure what we're doing with that.
Right.
Now, that being said, my concern's always been that we can do our part. But again, just like an aquarium, if we clean our little segment and the part all the way down south isn't being done by these numbers, it seems like there's a lot of problems up and down. Is there a coordinated effort? Is there a battle plan from top to bottom? Are we doing our thing, and they're kind of doing their thing, and then they're not doing anything? What, what is, what does that look like?
It, it looks like the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program's Conservation Comprehensive Management Plan. So they've got their CCMP process that they're going through right now, that, that Dr. Duane DeFreeze is leading, the, the National Estuary Program's CCMP process. So they are the, the entity that is attempting to be one lagoon, one voice, you know.
Go ahead.
One purpose. So they, so they are, so he, I'm on, I'm on their STEM committee, their Science, Technology, Engineering, Modeling, and Mathematics Committee. And so we're involved in that right now. So I, I would like to say that this north of here, the mosquito lagoon, Volusia County is proceeding with a reasonable assurance plan. They're voluntarily undertaking really a TMDL on their own. So they, they realize that their mosquito lagoon is in a bad way, it's in bad shape. And they're voluntarily proceeding with the state agency's TMDL process, which we've already gone through here. They don't have, it hasn't been designated for a TMDL yet, but they're proceeding with it. So they're doing the good faith effort, so to speak, of trying to create a B map for themselves. And then down the south, I mean, you know, those people cannot scream about the Lake Okeechobee discharge loud enough.
Right, right.
You know, that's its own.
Very frustrating.
Nightmare.
You know, and that you be so close to it and to be in the middle of everything. First of all, I appreciate you hearing the information you have. I won't say I understood it all, but I got enough with the numbers to see that there are some disparities up and down the, the lagoon. And some, you know, like you said, they can't jump up and down enough about Okeechobee. It's just, I don't know, sometimes I feel like, you know, it's, it's kind of like living on a block where, you know, you've really kept your yard nice, and you've got, and then the neighbor's not doing quite the good job. And sometimes, and I don't know all those stats and facts about what Volusia County is doing, and it's nice to hear those things. So I, I'm just pulling for us all to get the, on the same page and do the same things. So thank you for being that person.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think everybody does need to do, everybody's got to do what they can do. So we all have a role. You know, you all have a role as the city council. You know, we have a role as the residents of this county and of this state. So we all have to do, the businesses have a role. And everybody's got something that they can, they can do for our lagoon, because we're, we're all going to benefit from it in the end.
Well, I'm glad there's people like you and some of your people out there that have that focus. And so keep pushing.
Thank you. I'm glad for all the work that you're all doing too. Appreciate it.
One other question.
Of course.
Do you see any movement or any hint of plans for Okeechobee?
Hint of plans?
Yeah.
There, yeah, there's been a lot of hint of plans. Some of them are scarier than others. Let me think. So the latest is, I don't remember his name. There's a congressional bill, 4700, that's going, hopefully, we'll see how far it gets. And I can't think of the congressman's name off the top of my head. That, that would just add, you know how the Army Corps has a manual for when to open and close the gates? It would add human health to the equation of when and when not to open the gates.
So if we open the gates, we release it out into the ocean?
Yeah, we release it out to the estuary, the St. Lucy estuary, the south, central, south Indian River Lagoon, and then, and then the ocean.
So not a solution.
That's what they're doing now.
Oh, yeah, but that's not really a solution.
So what it would do is at least make them think, before we send toxic water down to St. Lucy, we should think about the human health impact. It's a baby step in the right direction.
Okay. Thanks.
I see, I see no other lights, but you've put a great presentation forth. It's very interesting. It's hard to get your hands around the whole thing, your arms around the whole thing, but we know you're working hard out there, as is Dr. DeFreeze as well, and, and others that are working. And we are trying to do our part. I explained that to you before the meeting as to what we have done. And we've done quite a bit, and the community is certainly behind it. So thank you for giving us this presentation.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
City manager, next one.
Yes, sir. The planning staff will provide council a presentation about multimodal transportation planning. Presentation will describe what a multimodal plan is and how it differs from a conventional bicycle pedestrian trail plan. And Trevor, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to be short here. I know we're short on time. So what I wanted to talk to you a little bit about is a multimodal transportation plan. On your next agenda, you have a consent agenda item to approve a draft scope for us to move forward with. Discussions with our continuing services consultant to come up with this multimodal transportation plan. And so when we're talking about transportation and multimodal transportation, for a long time, the state basically was only concerned about roadways, moving cars, how many vehicles could be accommodated on a roadway in a, in any given time. And that was the case up until 2011, when the Community Planning Act was passed. And so since then, the requirement for transportation concurrency has changed at the state level. And so many jurisdictions are, they're going to a multimodal approach. So it's a, it's a, they come up with a plan that addresses automobile traffic, trails, pedestrian mobility. So it kind of addresses all parts of a trip, because every trip begins and ends as a pedestrian, regardless of where you're going. And so, like I said, that includes things, cycling trails, public transit, automobiles, all of that together. And so our current concurrency system that the city uses, as I said, was pretty much across the board, applied up until 2011, and that was due to state regulations. And capacity, again, not mobility is emphasized. So it's all about moving vehicles back and forth. And that really kind of focuses on the short term, but not necessarily the long term, because as development changes over time, as you have different regulations, different types of development, the concurrency system doesn't really address that very well. So it, it misses that link between land use and transportation. And it's also, it's an unpredictable system as well, because one, one large development can totally change the dynamics of how the roadway system is utilized, basically where that capacity is, is allocated. And so what we're doing in the Titusville Tomorrow project that community development staff has been working on, this is a, these are revisions to the comprehensive plan that will be present, that have been presented and will be, continue to be presented throughout this year. It is a vision-based comprehensive plan that goes to 2040. And it really focuses on that link between land use and transportation. So it takes into account how, what happens on private property in terms of what, what types of buildings are being built, what that, what impacts that has to the transportation system, not only from a vehicular standpoint, but also from, you know, trails, sidewalks, how do people get around these, these new developments and back and forth between them. And so it will take into account the difference between, here again, between maybe a mixed-use neighborhood such as a downtown versus a commercial corridor such as, you know, Garden Street or Highway 50 or US-1 here in town. And so it looks at the type of development that could be accommodated and what, what types of transportation facilities will be, will be necessary. And so what this mobility, multimodal transportation plan will do in the big picture is it, it is a holistic look at mobility. How do people move into and out of the city and also within the city itself? And it's a system-wide look versus a piecemeal, only looking at vehicles, only looking at trails, only looking at pedestrians. It's a long-term plan. Most of the time, these are about a 20-year horizon. And it addresses, again, that multimodal land use pattern. And it emphasizes design over just a specific type of use. So it will take into account the differences that a mixed-use development will have on the, the transportation system versus a single-use, a single-use development. And so the scope that's, like I said, in your next agenda, is it looks at the needs for the city. It also takes a, a look at existing sources of revenue. So how could we pay for some of these proposed improvements? It will certainly be vetted through a public input process, similar to what the, the Titusville Tomorrow, the visioning exercise that we did about this time last year for the comprehensive plan. Another process like that will occur for this. And then the purpose, again, it, it looks at long-range transportation strategies. It is a long-term schedule. So as you see here, a 20-year schedule. And one thing that a lot of jurisdictions have used to implement these is implementing, it's called a mobility fee. And that, that will likely be referenced in the study, but would be implemented under a separate, a separate item. And a mobility fee is basically, it replaces transportation concurrency with this fee, and it allows money to be used that are typically now collected for impact fees to be used for a wider variety of options to help fund those projects that are identified through that plan. And so really, that, we just wanted to give you a quick overview of, of what that scope of work was for. And if you choose to approve that, we will be moving forward, like I said, with our, with our consultant. And I'll try to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Fokel?
Just a quick one. Is that mobility fee, are you looking at that being a new fee or a replacement?
It typically is a replacement. And that, that is a totally separate exercise that would have to be conducted, because there's a lot of variables that play into that. So I, I can't tell you exactly how it would be implemented, but typically, it replaces an impact fee. It's not an additional fee.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
I see no other questions. Not seeing any. Thank you very much for the presentation, sir.
Thanks, Trevor. Sir, last item is letters of appreciation I'd like to read for the record. From community development, Mr. Paul Bollington, Rose Coney, K.B. Ofuoso, Trevor Trefakin, from Fire and Emergency Services, Senior Fire Inspector Mark Wharton, from the Water Department, Mike Caffell, Mario Grant, Mike Green, Dick Narsow, and David Straub.
Thank you, sir. Last item is petitions and requests from the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak on any items? I see no one. We will, we'll take a 10-minute break, come back a quarter of, we'll call this meeting adjourned.